All right, I'm going to call to order the committee hall meeting for February 26 at 7:00 PM. First up is Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you do the roll call, please?
Sure, just run down the names really quickly. Alder Aratafrata.
Yeah.
Alder Clouter.
Yep.
Alder Krausy.
Yep.
Alder Rice.
Krausy.
Alder Richard, Mayor Richardson.
Here.
Alder Schroder.
Yep.
Alder Scott.
Yep.
Alder Strasman.
All right, Dan Barr is excused. All right, thank you. Then quick approval of minutes from January, anyone want to make a motion?
I'll move to hold the next question.
All right.
Second, second.
Dorothy, second, any changes? All right, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, those are approved. We have no public appearances for non-agenda items, so we can get right to the two agenda items. First up is Safe Kids, and Joe, would you like to introduce these guys?
Yeah, absolutely. First of all, thank you for the invitation to be able to present to you Safe Kids. They're affiliated with not only UW but also the American Families Children's Hospital, and I think the value that they are going to be able to bring to the city of Pittsburgh is that of pediatric risk reduction and injury prevention. I'm not going to take away their thunder, but I can tell you, since I've been here, it's been four years, we have enjoyed the partnership that we've had with Safe Kids in the fact that they've operated out of our station at least once or twice a month with child safety checks. They were able to provide safe sleep initiatives and train the community advocates out of our station. They've been working with us for 10-plus years, and what I can't necessarily provide to you that I know that Ben is going to share some information on is a little bit about the benefit, the stats behind how we are able to provide a greater benefit not only to the city of Pittsburgh but those that reside in our area. We resemble three different school districts, and this is a central location to all three of those to become a destination location for these advocacy programs. This is a proud moment because of the fact that we have been working on this solid for about two and a half years on this partnership, knowing full well that it needed to represent the best interests of the city and hopefully provide value to not only our pediatric population but those that support our peds and beyond. So with that, I'm going to introduce to you Ben and Rochelle. They are the team that will primarily reside there. We have a number of interns that reside there, and they can speak to the staff that will be available in the city of Pittsburgh. So thank you for the time, and Ben?
Thank you so much for having us. So my name is Ben Ethan, and I'm the Pediatric Trauma Injury Prevention Child Protection and Surgery Director at American Families Children's Hospital. And I have Rochelle and Laura, who are both managers that fall within that program. And so what I hope to do is to just give you guys a little bit of an overview of what we do currently and where we think we might be able to go, and hopefully where Pittsburgh can partner with us as we continue on this journey. So one of the reasons that we want to do this is that more children die from injuries than all other causes combined, and I think, you know, we all agree that any pediatric death is tragic, but when you look at the things that are really causing the numbers of deaths that we see, more kids die from injuries than from cancer, birth defects, heart disease, influenza combined. And so when we look at the burden of disease, this is really where we want to spend a lot of our focus on, because I would much rather never have them be our patient than be at our doors. So these are the ones that we would see successes if we never met them in our hospital, but rather in our community. So just a few more facts. So as American Families Children's Hospital is a Level 1 Pediatric Trauma Center, that's one of 42 centers in the country that have committed resources. It is a quite expensive endeavor on our part, and despite what some people think, we don't make money on trauma because that's not why we're doing it. This is what we see as our duty as a provider in our community. And as we've looked at, it's a huge burden not only for the number of children that are injured, you know, we have the fatalities that are there. We have almost 200,000 kids that are hospitalized because of injury, so even the ones that survive often have a lot of time away. It's a huge expense to the community, so if you look at it from a practical standpoint, $24 million is spent on hospitalized injuries, and so if we can prevent that with projects that keep the children out of the hospital, it's more than the benefit. One of the things we do struggle with is even though it causes more death than any other cause combined, we get very little research funding for it. And so despite us wanting to do a better job of being effective, a lot of it is, you know, for example, cancer, which we also absolutely support, the research that is necessary there, they get, you know, several-fold more research dollars towards it. And so a lot of what we do is community grassroots approaches. We've learned to do a lot with little. When we look at why kids are injured, you know, the things that shouldn't surprise us, motor vehicle crashes are the number-one cause, falls, you know, drownings, poisonings, things like that are also on that high list. And so we look at what data could show us as far as where we can spend the most effort and have the biggest return as far as keeping children safe. So even if you're not fatally injured, one out of 10 children, I have three, I feel like I disproportionately share that, because I feel like my children get injured more often than not, but it is a huge burden for people every year. When we look at in Wisconsin, what ambulances are called for, this is not just local data, but this is our statewide data. Again, it mirrors what we see hospitalizations for, so motor traffic, vehicle crashes, slipping, falling, stumbling, some mechanical forces. Unfortunately, assault is in the top causes, you know, it's actually more than bike helmet laws, we'll be focusing on that, but more kids are actually injured by assault than they are on bike crashes. Unfortunately, we see a lot of self-harm, so self-injurious behavior up to and including attempted suicide. And then the other things that we see, and abuse and maltreatment certainly play a role there as well. So essentially, what we look at when we think about injury prevention programs is where can we reduce injury-related morbidity and mortality through looking at evidence-based, population-health-driven programming and advocacy. So some of the things we do right now are things with safe sleep environments, you know, certainly there are lots of considerations, different cultures or different people have different thoughts on how you should sleep, and certainly we want to be supportive of that. What we are aiming to do is give information about the safest options, and if there are resources that are needed, especially safe sleep environments, that's where we see providing those at low or no cost to families that need them. Often, people that have housing instability or are in situations where they don't have steady housing, a place to sleep is often something that the whole family struggles with, but certainly the infants are often not in the ideal position, so we have done a lot with making sure that if there are needs, we can provide those. There's also Safe Sleep Sabbath that a lot of the community groups want to educate their communities about these practices and talk about different resources, and so we'd like to support those as much as we can. One of the things that we're looking to bring is there is a program, it's a national program that is basically a boot camp for first-time fathers, and it's run by first-time fathers who are a few months out from their first few months, and it's kind of the "I wish I would have known three months ago" these things. And so there is, we actually are lucky enough that one of our staff members is a national faculty and is hoping to bring this to our area, and so we want to partner with community organizations that would be interested in having these boot camps. There's also one for mothers, and looking at adapting those to different groups that might have different needs. And so one of the things we have the benefit of is if there is something that is unique to the population that wants these programs, we have the ability to tailor it to that content, and so we're looking at other groups that might be interested in this, and so that is something that we're bringing.
Yep, before you change that picture, I like this picture, because look at all of those guys looking at a baby as if they've seen it for the first time. That's a good indication of some of the novel approaches that Safe Kids brings to this, is they're looking outside the box, and they're really trying to address things that we know are an issue in our community, and it's just a funny way of representing that.
Yeah, we have a lot of training aids that people often question why I have certain things, something like the box of diapers in the doll, as simple as it sounds. If you've never changed a diaper, it's a lot easier to do it on a mannequin before you do it on a squirmy child for the first time. So that's one of the programs we're excited about. One of the things we also have is the Purple Period of Crying, which is aimed at helping similar to parenting class, that child is filled with times where they just cry, and that's normal. And so looking at, especially in the first year of life, that's the most common time that we see inflicted trauma, and so looking at ways that you can self-identify that you need a break, and also understand that it is limited, it doesn't last forever, they will sleep through the night eventually, they do stop crying. And so this is another resource that we have, a multiple modality approach. So this is something that we can give them access to an iPad and code, and they can do this in the privacy of their home, they can do it in a class, we often do this with our primary care or at our hospital, just say, "Just so you know, this is normal," and gives you kind of some of those coping mechanisms. We also have things like soothers and pacifiers and ways to distract the children so that if that's what they need, that we can provide those as well. One of the campaigns that we talk a lot about is Hitting Hearts, and certainly, you know, Wisconsin has statutes that govern what is and is not acceptable as far as corporal punishment, and we're not trying to circumvent those, but what we do try and give is some evidence that often corporal punishment is not going to give you the results that some people think it is, and there are some negative benefits, which I try to educate about that and give people the tools to make decisions, reminding them that, you know, children are not defiant out of intent, but, you know, a two-year-old sometimes is just a two-year-old, and two shall pass. I'm still waiting for my children to pass. One of the things that we also look at is trying to look at being supportive, and so one of the things that falls under our program is the child abuse prevention, and a lot of times there's negative associations with that, that we're telling people, you know, you're abusing your children, we're watching that, but really what we want to do is support families and give them tools to be successful. And so, you know, kind of our campaign is that we stand up for children and that we want to make it carefree as much as we can and support that. And so we will see in April, it is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and so we have some things. This t-shirt is one that we will be wearing in our community to show our support. You'll see some blue pinwheels, and hopefully that'll be here as well. That's a national program that just brings awareness to child abuse prevention, and so in April, blue is kind of associated with that, and we hope to have some programming for that as well, in Pittsburgh as well, if we can. One of the things that we see unfortunately is that we see a lot of children injured in pretty catastrophic manners by lawnmowers, and a lot of families don't necessarily think that would be something, you know, a lot of people unintentionally, the riding lawnmower is a thing a lot of people enjoy seeing, so if Grandma or Grandpa or Mom or Dad is in the riding lawnmower, it's not uncommon for a five- or six-year-old to run out and try and get their attention, and unfortunately, we see the negative side effects. And so just explain to parents and caregivers that if you're under the age of 16, you should not ride on a riding lawnmower, if you're under the age of 12, you shouldn't push a riding lawnmower, and if you're under the age of six, you should not be outside when anybody is mowing the lawn, things like that. And we've had some families come back, and this is actually driven by a family that had, unfortunately, a grandmother ran over their grandchild, and the child lived, but a lot of guilt on the grandmother's part, and this is her way of trying to make sure that doesn't happen to their child. So things like that are other partnerships that we have done recently. One of the big things, being from Pittsburgh, I notice that my kids are out trick-or-treating, I always get nervous, you know, my kids are always under the guise of I do this for a living, and so they know that, they can argue all they want, they're going to wear their car seat, they're going to wear the helmet, they're going to be the kid with all the reflectors whether they like it or not. But Halloween safety, so we have a lot of kids that are out in the dark, and so reflective gear, talking about sidewalk safety. One of the things that we hope to do is at the firehouse have a trick-or-treating option for children, so if they don't have other places to go or they don't want to go on the streets in the dark, that they can come to a secure location, as well as give out reflective materials here as well as across Dane County. We have something, Safety Town is something that we partnered with Madison for a long period of time, their fire department and police department, and we would like to do something similar here as well, and that is kind of an annual program where we have a variety of safety topics. Typically, the ones that we do right now are aimed at the younger children, so it's kind of the school age or right before school age, and it covers a variety of topics from passenger safety, crossing the street, stranger danger, fire safety, a variety of topics, and we teach it at a level that is appropriate for them. We have secured some other resources, so in the past, we've had to charge for this, and I'm happy to say this here, for the first time, we won't charge a tuition, so we can hopefully reach more kids that have needs for this education. We're still hoping to partner with Madison and as well as any other municipality that would like to bring this to their area, but certainly having the fire station and having a presence here, that would be an option that we see as a next step. We also have some longstanding bike and pedestrian safety programs, everything from safe routes to school, helping kids understand how to get to school safely, helping the teachers and parents understand what things we might need to consider as far as where to place the bus stops, where to have the children walk. We often have parades where we'll walk with the kids and kind of give them some encouragement along the way. We also have some bike safety programs that we'd like to continue. Some other things, so kind of the other thing we see, fire prevention obviously is a huge issue. One of the things that is kind of unique is that car seats expire, and car seats that are expired or that have been in car crashes need to be taken out of commission, and it's not easy to figure out what to do with this large piece of molded plastic and metal. And so one of the things that we're also interested in doing is giving people a place to recycle or reduce the impact, and so we will make every effort to make those environmentally conscious, but if nothing else, make sure that they're not dangerous, and then help them secure new car seats if they need to, and we also have funding for that. So one of the things that we see a lot is poison prevention, and most often, we're talking about medications, so things about keeping medications away from children, how to, you know, more and more people have medications in the home, so that's not an option to not have them, but how do you keep them safe, how do you understand what to do with them when you're done? Some of the things that we look at in Wisconsin is children are disproportionately represented in a lot of our data, and so when we look at mechanisms of injury, specifically at our teenage population, which is an area that we have identified as needing more work, 52% of all injuries in Wisconsin that require EMS to be there are represented by 15- to 19-year-old children. So if you think about how little of the population of 15- to 19-year-olds represent, they are more than half of the traumas that we see, and so it's a huge area that we want to target. They're more than half of the car crashes as well, which is not surprising to anybody who has young drivers, you know, they're learning how to navigate, and so doing that safely, you know, we need kids to learn to drive, but we want to make sure that they have the tools. Talking about distracted driving, how to drive at night, all those things are programs that we are currently doing and want to expand. Unfortunately, they represent almost 2/3 of the assault cases are teenagers, so more than 2/3 of the people are in that age range, so that's another area that we have a lot of interest in trying to help. And not surprisingly, those who are in this space, but almost 3/4 of the self-injurious behavior is from children in that age range. So a large epidemic that we have, and we're looking at strategies to help with that as one of our flagship projects this year. Again, mental health in general, if it's not even if it's self-injurious behavior, mental health affects children a lot more than I think a lot of people realize, you know, 70% of mental health services are geared at children, and especially in children in the adolescent range, so that is a huge issue that we're working on expanding. Some of the other things we've done, we have a teen program that helps kids mentor other kids, so kids that are interested in going into health professions or first responder professions can get some hands-on experience, and we have a lot of fun with this. It's a program that is near and dear to a lot of people. They do everything from fire safety, they have mass disaster mockups, so they get some exposure to what is possible, and then they have some mentor opportunities. They also often go back and want to teach at their high schools, a lot of kids have said, you know, this is something I want to take back to my school, I want to teach fire safety, I want to teach stop the bleed, I want to teach something to the peers, and we found that, not shockingly, peer-to-peer education is much more effective than if I interact with the peers. So anything that we can do where the peers are leading and we can support them is another project we want to do. As I talked a little bit about drivers' education, and specifically partnering with EMS and other community partners, I think those are the people that have relationships in the community and can strengthen the message that we give, and then suicide prevention. So both peer-to-peer, and we have some cool programs, the Hope Squad is one that is evidence-based and is a peer-to-peer program that helps peers identify in each other opportunities that might be concerning, and then how do they refer that to adults? And obviously, that has some concerns and some benefits, and so navigating with schools how that works. Oregon School District has agreed to take that on, and we'd like to look at any other partnerships that we can help. We are taking charge of that. Besides the Safe Kids events we do here, it's all over the Madison area and beyond, so we have events all over, and we're more than happy to partner with anybody that is interested in this area. Some of the other areas that we have collaboration with is the Dane County Traffic Safety Commission, the Fetal Infant Mortality Review, which looks at opportunities of infants that are unfortunately mortalities and what we could maybe do to prevent them. There's also a pediatric version, so not just infants, any child, there's a child death review that we want, that we participate in. Safe Communities, there is Safe Kids organizations beyond just our Madison area of Wisconsin, and there's worldwide. We've done a lot with the police departments and some other community groups of a variety of backgrounds, as well as Head Start and Early Start. We do have the Safety Center in the hospital at AFCH, and we do provide car seats installation, and we also do that in the community, and so that's one of the things that we want to bring here, is we have car seat inspections, we can help installations. We're lucky enough to have multiple languages that we can provide this education in, so we have Spanish, we have Mong, and we have the ability, if there's people that speak other languages, to have that instruction in those situations. We've installed thousands of car seats, and most of them have been purchased or we distribute free car seats every year as well. Talk about who should be in a car seat and help with the guidance that is in accordance with state law and recommendations, so things like how old do you need to be to be out of a booster seat, how big you need to be, we have a great big Bucky that has his hand where you need to be, and if you're not as tall as Bucky's hand, you have to be in a booster seat, which the kids get excited for Bucky and then get sad if they're not above the line, so we talk about it is a safer option and it is what the race car drivers do, so you should be excited to be safer than the rest of us. One of the other things we look at is our educational reach, and so we've touched over 60,000 caregivers, parents and other caregivers, several thousand teenagers, and then we have a large distribution of safety items, and that could be from car seats, medication locks, gates, whatever safety products are necessary. We also have the AFCH Safety Center that has a little bit more of the offerings, so bike helmets, car installation, home recreation safeties, a lot to do with kids with special needs, and so if you have a child that has special needs and you want to look at how to make the home safer for them, we have experts that have helped with that and are willing to do that. That's one of the things that we hope that we could bring here as well, because as much as we can offer it downtown, I think there's a lot of people that can't get down, you know, as somebody who has to park there every day, it's not the most convenient place to get to, and I have a parking pass. So we're looking at where else in the community we can offer these things at low or no cost or even just the more convenient locations, and we do that so that we can partner and provide the education. We actually sell at my cost, so it's not a business for us, it's an opportunity to get more educational opportunities out there. With that, I will ask, this is kind of the, we do our best, and the gate is properly installed, and the kids have found a way to make us still nervous with this, but kids are kids, and so we now have netting, if you have this picture, let me know, we have a solution for this as well, but... So with that, are there any questions or opportunities that we can partner? I think one of the other things that we want to talk about is these are the things that we're working on now, but one of our charges is that if there are the things that we haven't thought of or the community wants, one of our responsibilities is to ask what we can do to help, and so we have access to resources, experts, and we're more than willing to look at other options, because again, this is meant to be for the community, so if there's other things that this is not doing, we want to make sure we know that as well.
Joe? Yeah, so a couple of things that I want to bring up is how many ways this actually benefits us, one of which is obviously the programs that are offered. I think Ben, in and of himself, is a huge value to have in the area. I remember when I was the training officer in Oak Creek, Ben was one of the instructors that traveled statewide and beyond to introduce pediatric risk reduction, advocacy, assessment, and now he works pretty much in the same building as me, so I see that as a great value to our area, because one of the hardest populations to treat, and it's not because of the fact that they're just little people, there's emotions assigned and assessed to those that are younger, and it's nice to be able to approach that in a way that makes sense and has some data and research behind it, and Ben brings that to the table. Rochelle's been working with us since I've been here and beyond, and the fact that she gets to live out this dream of helping out kids and being in a place that provides the space to do it. Initially, there was not going to be a Safe Kids in the city of Pittsburgh because we were moving our fire station. What we found out on the east side is the fact that in order for us to move administration to the signed location, we would have needed a second floor, which would have increased our construction cost from anywhere $800,000 to $1 million, $1 million is what it would have cost in addition to what we already spent. By investing in the building and by finding those that could invest in our property and offset our costs, we were looking for the right partner, and we already had it. We reached out to those that were in charge of the program at the time, and we saw extreme value in bringing this to the city of Pittsburgh. They've already mentioned another huge component to this, it's access. We know what our population looks like. We have one of the most, if not the most diverse populations in Dane County, city of Pittsburgh, per capita, and a lot of that resides so close by and is within reach of these programs that it now becomes easier for us to provide that assistance. The language barriers are another really good example of something that we don't necessarily always have in-house, but we have now available to us through our partnership. So I know I'm coming across as maybe a little bit too ecstatic about this, but I am telling you, this is one thing that I do believe will serve our community for many years to come and in the best of ways as we empower our future generation and make them safer.
Questions from you and Dorothy.
The one ask that I would have numbers of years ago, we used to sponsor a bike rodeo every year. We haven't done that for a number of years now. I'd love to see it come back.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we actually were just talking with Chief Brecklin the other day about that and how we can help facilitate, and we have helmets that we can give to families, we have that available to us as well, so we think it'd be a fantastic idea.
Cool, thank you.
I think there's also opportunities besides just what we've talked about, you know, there's so much that we do, you know, there's a lot with the LGBTQ community that's kind of in our space, we have a lot with kids that need adaptive resources, so, you know, Playground Falls is certainly an area that we have, and, you know, being that I live kind of right between Tower Hill and the other parks in town, that, you know, I often, it's my kids that are on there, and so it doesn't have to be things that we do at our fire station, that, you know, we, as much as we do there, we would be happy to go anywhere else. You know, I know there's talk of an adaptive playground, and that's also things that, you know, if you guys need help with selection or people, we actually have, one of the things I think is really a benefit at AFCH is we have patient-family advocates, and most of them are families who tell us, you know, when we built our children's hospital, they came in and said, "This is what a parent wants, so you guys can build your fancy hospital, but if you want it to be friendly for parents and patients, do things like," you know, our office, Laura's unfortunately stuck with me, and an office that's about the size of this table, because all of our families have giant windows to the outside that they can see, and we have offices, which, you know, is the way we should do it, but those are the things that sometimes having a child's parent that has adaptive needs, you know, I have several in my family that, knowing, it doesn't matter if you're adaptive, if you can't get there, it doesn't serve that need, and so just things like where you need to park and all those things, and those are other areas that we're more than happy to offer whatever resources we can.
So Julio, this is the group that I was talking about when you were looking at your accessible playground and the advocacy behind it, they have some of those resources available to you.
Mm-hmm. Gina?
I had two asks. The first, I think it would be great if we could get the media involved with this, because ultimately, we don't, even as a collective body and through this communications, have the ability to reach every single house that might be able to use that service, and I think media can be pretty constructive in that space, so I think when we're ready, I'd like us to consider that. The second thing is, within our neighborhood, we did a thing called spring training, and we did a lot of, a lot of the things that you're talking about, and our target was that it seems like, you know, once spring comes out, the kids have forgotten the safety rules about crossing the road and the bikes, et cetera, et cetera. So even if we had a way to spin that up and have a baseball theme or something of that nature, I think the timing would be nice.
Absolutely. That's actually another valuable aspect that you brought up. One of the other benefits of partnering with UW and American Families Children's Hospital is the fact that they do have obviously a great deal of respect for the media and outreach within the media, and getting messages out is one of their strong suits. And the other thing that I wanted to bring up is the fact that this... And the other thing that I wanted to bring up is the fact that this, these organizations, specifically Safe Kids, are more than willing to have the uncomfortable conversation, gun safety, suicide prevention, when we start talking about the abuse factor that we know exists in our communities, not just Pittsburgh but beyond, obviously. These uncomfortable conversations need to happen, and they're the appropriate resource to actually pull from when it comes to addressing the outcome, the sometimes negative outcomes associated with not addressing it.
Yeah, we actually did a couple of things around that. When we did it in our neighborhood, they brought the dogs in so the kids could, you know, again, make that friendship between police and between fire. I want to say we also did maybe like a DNA kit with the kids so that there was a way to capture that information as well, and so there were really a variety of services that we tried to package into that spring training thing that not only focused on the safety elements, but a lot more.
I think just because our name is pediatric, it doesn't mean that we aren't opposed to working with adults as well. You know, we have counterparts on the adult side, but also with kids, often parents or caregivers are the ones that we need to target. And so we also are more than willing to help with things like if you have children, how you talk to them about the dangers of sexting or those type of things, which, you know, doesn't happen in a lot of people's minds, but I can tell you it does. And if not talking about it fixed it, we would be great, but so far that strategy has not proven to be effective. So I think, you know, there's a variety of topics that is, you know, we have kind of alluded to is awkward conversations to have, but that's where we live, and not having them is not an option. So, you know, we're more than happy to have those conversations, you know, human trafficking, sexting, those are all things that we deal with on a daily basis, and I think we have some expertise that we can offer.
Other people have comments or questions at all?
Yeah, Tom.
I have the public safety in my background, and this is the first time I've seen your presentation. I probably wouldn't bring this up, but because we have one in the city of Pittsburgh, I'm going to bring it up. And just food for thought, it's railroad tracks. Kids and railroad tracks don't mix.
Absolutely.
And I didn't see anything in that presentation on railroad tracks. It's just food for thought, or you can check with M P D and see what they think, but that's one piece here that I think you're missing.
Absolutely.
So, food for thought.
And that's one more thing that I think is of value is the adaptability of programming. And the fact that they're in the community and approachable, we can look at not only what is in front of us right now, but those things that we cannot predict because they're not even invented yet. To be able to address that by proactively getting out into the community and addressing those things before they become problems, I think those are huge. And the last thing that I will say, because I know I like to talk, it's not the Joe Show. This is a matter of sharing some very valuable information, but the fact that they now have a location that is dedicated to their purpose, we are talking about addressing things like the lease and the things that go into that as far as the term of the lease, and these are things that we're working on on the city side and the U W side. But the more permanent their facility is, the more likely they are to get funding to do things like renovate the building, not at the city's cost, at theirs. And to be able to put into place things that would typically cost the city money, but now are being afforded because of the fact that they have the ability to raise funds and to get grants that we typically wouldn't be able to see. And it's because of the fact that they sort of own that side of the building, and I say own, obviously it's ours, but they pay rent, and as long as we're able to address the things that are important to them, and they have a certain degree of faith that they're going to be there a while, it's a lot easier for them to provide things that actually benefit the city through proactive funding.
I think it's a great thing to have in the city. I think we're really fortunate to be able to do this partnership, and I look forward to seeing lots of other things coming in the future. I know if you have any events or anything like that, and hopefully I can make it, I'm happy to step out and help. I can't commit to other people up here, but hopefully they would also come out and help as well. But, you know, I'm just, you know, really excited to see that and looking forward to seeing more as you guys continue to operate here.
Absolutely.
Anything else at all, Dorothy?
I was just going to say, we gave the golf course a ten-year guarantee. I can't see why we can't do the same. Question that I had was, Joe brought up diversity. I was wondering what kind of inroads you guys make in working relatively intimately with low-income communities of color.
I think it's one of the areas that we recognize is a need, and it's also one that we recognize, if my face is not the one that is the one to deliver that message, that we need to be respectful of, help us, help you, and tell us what you need from us. And so I think those partnerships, you know, we enjoy a lot of partnerships with organizations that have more of a standing in those environments. And so what our role is, is to say, what can we do to help? We're more than willing to come and offer whatever we can, but I think that's where having the conversations. And, you know, one of the things that we really look at as our responsibility is to partner with people who are already in this space and say, how can we support what you're doing, and what else would you like to see us do? That's one of our missions, is to reach children and the adults as well of different backgrounds that maybe not have access. I think it's great to reach the people we have reached, but I think what I'm really looking at focusing on is there are children that haven't benefited from some of the programs we have, and that might be because we haven't done a good enough job of reaching out and saying, here's what we have to offer. But it's also, I think we need to be cognizant of what do we need it to look like? Is there a day of the week? Is there a time of the day? Is there a speaker that you would like us to talk to as opposed to ours? So I think we're humbly willing to inquire what is necessary, but that is definitely an area that we would like to be more involved in.
But I can also speak to this, Dorothy, and it's the fact that we have had more diverse populations come through the fire station since they have been residing in that space, and that has actually provided us with additional touchpoints. So to be able to provide that positive influence to our community and to get kids in the fire station that resemble our community is huge, because I do believe that's going to pay significant dividends when we're trying to introduce kids to other professions. And fire service, EMS, law enforcement, those are occupations that do require diversity, and we're fortunate enough to have that come into our station now, without invitation.
Even though I think a lot of my programming are fun and entertaining, I think I've found that sometimes what the kids like is not necessarily what I like. So we also are recognizing that, you know, Bucky Badger and the helicopter are much bigger draws than what I think is entertaining content, and so it's also partnering with the things that are fun to say, you know, let us know what events that you would like us to help be a part of and that we can support and show our partnerships. And Bucky and the helicopter are two things that are a lot of fun to bring, so.
You mean they don't like pediatric nurses in pink ties?
No, they don't. My seven-year-old does, that's the only one that likes my pink tie, so.
Do you know?
Have we looked at any kind of leveraging, any kind of networking strategies, like going to the preschools or the larger daycares or the churches or the liaisons through the healthy neighborhoods? So, because it seems to me that that's where we're going to see a reasonable number of the folks that would be interested in this program.
Absolutely. I think, you know, the short answer is yes. I think the long answer is we could always do better, because I think there's always great groups that sometimes we just don't know about, and sometimes it's just helping to make those connections. You know, we do a lot with community groups around Wisconsin, and, you know, I think having a good idea of what's around so that we can do more, I think that's where we can really benefit. And now that I'm lucky enough to have some more staff, so Rochelle and Laura have recently joined this team, that's where I see us, being able to go out and see what's out there, and again, looking at where we can be partners with people that maybe we haven't reached out to in the past.
I think Chief can also help connect you with, there's a Faith Leaders Network in the community as well, and I think that's another area that has a lot of inroads into the community can help you with outreach as well.
Yeah, with the remodel of the station, we're actually talking about bringing that group in for one of their meetings, and then we can actually do a presentation as far as what's available.
One of the other benefits that we have is being associated with the university. There's a great group of students who really want to get out and do these projects, and so we have a lot of internship opportunities. So that's another place where we've been able to make some connections with people that have a passion in different areas of, if those are things that maybe those community organizations might need some intern support on some projects, that'd be another great place that we can look at, providing some resources for both the students, but also for the communities.
See nothing else? Thank you very much for coming in. Appreciate it.
Thanks for having us.
Yes, thank you.
I do have one more thing.
Oh, alright.
One more thing, and I apologize, but obviously there are tenants now, they're already, they already reside in the space. Feel free to stop by anytime. We'd be happy to give you a tour. We appreciate this opportunity to come before you tonight and to sort of present the value of the program, but ultimately, when you see it for your, with your own eyes and for all of the things that they have to offer, it's worth the trip, and you can see some of the other folks that work in that area. If you call me, I'll also let you know when their car seat checks are, so you can actually see the space in action. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Alright, up next is R C C. Give us an update. I'm not sure if Phil, you want to kind of introduce this one, or let someone else in the group, but it's kind of up to you.
I could, I think Nate probably put the most work into this. I'd be happy to let him. I'm going to stay up here and drive, I'm presenting a few of the slides, but let Nate kind of intro things and kick it off.
Come on up, whoever wants to be up here in the hot seat, if you will. We can bring up more chairs though, so no one has to stand alone, or sit alone.
We have to, must we want to bring order? No, no, that's good.
Welcome.
As far as advancing the slides, do you want to advance them from up there? And let's just tell you to advance them, and then when you speak, how would you like to handle that?
If it's okay for me to just stay up here while I'm talking, that might be easiest.
Okay.
As long as it's not going to be distracting for anyone up here.
No. Do you want to talk in one of these, or do you want to get up? It's up to you.
I think this is good. Good evening, my name is Nate Unowski, I'm the current Resource Conservation Commission Chair. I've been on the commission for about three years now and got elected to.
Sounds like it.
Yeah. It wasn't, but I think it is now.
Oh, maybe you're picking up from other mics.
We're good. I don't think I'll repeat myself. But again, my name is Nate, it's good to be here, it's good to see all of you here tonight. I have a couple guests with me here that I'll introduce on the next slide, but we as a commission here are going to kind of give an overview to you tonight, tell you about some of the things that we work on, and hopefully we can get some feedback. We can have some good conversation between the presentation, but we've kind of set it up to have maybe a nice conversation at the end of it too. In addition to myself, maybe, do you guys want to introduce yourself too?
Sure, I'm Chris Jimison, I was a past Chair of the Resource Conservation Commission, and I've served on the Resource Conservation Commission since 2008, with one two-year break.
Hi, I'm Kim Morgantine, and I serve on the commission, I've been on since, I think, 2016.
We also have two guests with us, we have Diane Struck and Shelley Reynolds as well. Diane's been on the commission, how many years, Diane? A long time. Shelley's been with us a couple of years now, and Nancy Horns was unable to make it tonight, but she's also been on the commission a couple of years and is not renewing her term, so we're going to be looking for replacement in the upcoming future here. In addition to the residents, we also have two great newer staff. Phil Groupie, if you want to, may you share something?
Sure, so I've been the Sustainability Specialist with Pittsburgh for about six months now. Spent some years working in energy efficiency and environmental education, and I've been on my first few months focusing pretty heavily on our energy profile and renewable energy, the clean energy resolution, and then kind of broadening out from there. I'm with the Bike Committee as well, and have some other activities.
Yeah, Phil has some pretty big shoes to fill. I know a lot of you probably knew Erica, who did a pretty good job. Ellen did too, she, her stay wasn't too long, but she did some good stuff while she was here too. And Claudia Guy, who's a newer environmental engineer, she has done another great job too. In addition to the staff, then we have our alder, Sarah Schrader. How long have you been with us then?
Just since this last April that I joined the R C C.
Great, good. So like I said, the goals for tonight is just to share a little bit about our focus areas, how they've changed in the past, kind of to what they are currently, and talk about some of the programs that we've been working with, kind of proposing. Hopefully we can create an alignment with you as the council, hopefully on what our approach is and some of our proposals are currently. Talk about some of the sustainability initiatives that we're currently implementing. So this is kind of the definition of what our commission is. We recommend policy enforcement and information programs that promote the general preservation and improvement of the environment, most importantly. And this is including, but not limited to, stormwater, which has recently been a very important topic, waste material or recycling and trash more generally, energy efficiency, and finally, climate protection or climate change, which moves into a climate change status, which is something that we as a commission take seriously and feel like we need to know a lot about to get Pittsburgh in the know and kind of be appoint people, point people to help the city understand what's going on and kind of what the future holds for it too. Up on the screen is just a kind of a classic graph that always shocked me to look at of how it's the historical carbon dioxide levels in the atmosphere that could be scientifically tracked over, you know, hundreds of thousands of years here. And on the far right is kind of the current state of where it's at, at, this is a 2018 average of around four hundred parts per million, and I think it's even higher than that today. So it shocked, again, it shocks me every time, and it kind of, you know, makes me strive to be on this commission and think about these issues and, you know, help out, you know, residents understand and peers understand what's going on, so. Kind of is shown here in Pittsburgh's previous commitments, kind of looking back to 2008, the current mayor signed or pledged toward the U S Mayor's Conference Climate Protection Agreement, which kind of vowed or pledged to reduce your municipality's carbon footprint back to the 1990s levels approximately. So at the time, and I guess, you know, I was a lot younger then, didn't really live through it, but seemed like kind of the first stepping stone and congruent with the Kyoto Protocol, just to get, you know, some traction in the sand to start thinking about these issues. The next year then that moved forward with the state of Wisconsin's 25 by 25 Clean Energy Pledge, which, you know, showed to demonstrate that a municipality should have 25% of its energy coming from renewable energy sources by the year 2025. So that was, you know, pretty big, right, 25%. A lot of communities didn't have anything, so they had to start somewhere, right? Moving forward, it wasn't just all about, you know, clean energy, it was all about sustainability as a whole, right? So part of the green tier legacy communities that Pittsburgh is a part of is looking more at generous sustainability, how that, how they can improve as a municipality. And finally, as of last year, the Clean Energy Resolution was passed, which took the, you know, Wisconsin's 25 by 25 Clean Energy Pledge and really ramped it up, you know. We saw the graph on the previous slide, something needs to happen now, right? 25% isn't enough, where the Clean Energy Resolution, you know, resolves that the city of Pittsburgh needs to have 100% renewable energy, you know, by these certain dates, I think. You know, citywide for city operations is by 2030, 2035? I think Phil will go into that in the next slide, but then ultimately to, you know, also look at the community as a whole, rather than just the city operations. It also includes something about, you know, we can implement all this, you know, infrastructure of green energy solutions, but also talks about how residents and municipal operations can reduce the energy use in general, right? So it's a two-way train here. So again, Pittsburgh has been, you know, on the ball and kind of a leader with some of these initiatives. I think I'll turn it over to Phil now, if you want to take the show.
Sure. So just looking at those, the last two commitments that Nate referenced and kind of how those are helping to drive some of the R C C's focuses these years, most recently the Clean Energy Resolution, I believe everyone up here is still pretty familiar with that. these years, most recently the Clean Energy Resolution, I believe everyone up here is still pretty familiar with that, just passed last spring. And there were a number of components to that resolution, including increasing green infrastructure, increasing the tree canopy, focusing on energy efficiency and education, but the two, maybe the, the two goals that stood out the most and that the RCC is, is looking at heavily, one is that expanding beyond Governor Doyle's inspired 25 by 25 pledge, that the city of Mon, uh, city, sorry, city of Fitchburg would, by the year 2030, achieve 100% of our municipal energy usage through renewable sources, which I believe is the most aggressive 100% goal in the state of Wisconsin, hitting that by 2030. We'd also look at reducing Fitchburg's per capita fossil fuel energy usage 50% by 2050, which is again, a, a pretty aggressive mark to set kinda to, to, to put ourselves up as a leader around the state. The, the second notable one with the Clean Energy Resolution was calling on Fitchburg to develop an energy and water plan that includes sustainability and, and resiliency components that, that have to do with adapting for climate change. From the Green Tier Legacy Community Commitment, a decade earlier, we're in a partnership of communities around the state of Wisconsin that, that all, all identify as Green Tier Legacy Communities and, and part of that is a commitment to share information with each other and, and partner on practices that, that help us to improve our water quality, our sustainability practices, a lot of, a lot of environmental topics that, you know, GTLC, sorry, the Green Tier Legacy Communities are, have been in a lot of conversations in the last couple of years about how to advance this program further and identify funding opportunities and, and partnerships with things like solar group buys, but, but these, this was a commitment that Fitchburg made by signing on to that, that group. So in terms of where we stand with the 25 by 25 goals, we, we, I think most notably began pushing towards those with these two projects in 2009 and 2011 with a solar thermal installation on the city hall that's, that's providing hot water through solar energy and then the first rooftop PV system that Fitchburg had in 2011, providing electricity, again, on, on the roof of city hall. Those have since grown into a number of additional projects in 2013. We had a retrocommissioning study that was just identifying opportunities for increasing efficiency of HVAC equipment and some other, other possible retrocommissioning projects around some of our municipal buildings and we've, we've already implemented a number of those recommendations and, and saved quite a bit of energy there. In 2017, we had a 362 kilowatt solar installation on the roofs of four Fitchburg municipal buildings. Those, along with the 2009 and 2011 installations, are now providing about 9% of our net city energy usage. And that number will be higher, I'll show on the next slide for, for some other reasons. Then we also had geothermal HVAC. When the library was, was constructed and, and pursued its lead gold status, one part of that was a geothermal HVAC system, which was repeated in two of our fire stations. All three of those buildings now, if you compare them to the, the ASHRI standards, the American Society of Heating, Refrigerating and Air Conditioning Engineers, all three of those buildings have energy usage intensities, so energy usage per square foot that is between 20 and 50% below the national average benchmark by ASHRI's count. So, so they're all really leading the way in terms of energy intensity for those, for those building types in large part because of those geothermal installations. And then this chart on the right just, just shows KWH purchases that we have made. So this is kilowatt hours purchased from MG&E over the last five years, just for the four, for City Hall, Community Center, Public Works and Library. Four of the, the primary energy users that have also had some of these solar installations as, as components there. And you can see just since 2016, seven, 17, 18 and 19, each of those three years decreased in our electricity purchases from MG&E. So there's, again, a, a significant impact already from the solar installations that, that were, we're cutting back pretty significantly on our, our expenditures on electricity. So then, in, in terms of where we are in trying to achieve our 25 by 25 goals, these top few rows just showed those three solar projects, the, the capacity size of those in kilowatts, how much energy they're saving per, uh, this was in 2019, the, the one-year kilowatt hour savings, rough estimate of cost savings to the city and how much CO2 we've prevented from being emitted in the atmosphere from the, the energy generation from coal and gas plants that's been avoided. And you can see it's a pretty significant impact there. In addition to that, the energy that we purchase from MG&E, and I should point out that we, we do also have some small energy purchases from Alliant, it makes up maybe another 1% of our totals, has some, some streetlights, I think are the large, the largest component of those, those Alliant purchases, so that, those numbers aren't in here. But we purchase more energy from MG&E and a, a portion of MG&E's grid is also renewable. The reason I have a range in here is I'm still working with a couple of MG&E reps, with, with Scott who was here last night at, at Common Council on kinda trying to nail down not just what their percentages, but they provide renewable energy to customers through the Green Power Tomorrow Program, through renewable energy riders like the one discussed last night. And I wanna make sure that we're not double counting. If, if a customer is claiming renewable energy from a purchase, I wanna make sure I'm not including that in the percent of the, the grid energy we're buying. So somewhere, my, I would say probably my 90% confidence interval right now is that we're somewhere between 13.5% and 17.5% renewable. I cited 13% last night, I, I wanna be a little bit more conservative until I'm confident. But, but we're certainly well on our way to getting 25% by 2025, especially with the renewable energy rider that we're gonna be pushing forward with. If we get another 10% of our energy usage from that solar array, you know, if we're at the high end here, then we're above 25% next year, if not, we're certainly within a striking distance. So we're in a, a really good point, we're in a really good spot right now for making good on those commitments. And then circling back to the sustainability plan, this energy and water plan that was called out in the Clean Energy Resolution last year. A number of other communities around us do have sustainability plans. Madison, Monona, Middleton, Dane County just released their, their comprehensive sustainability, their climate action plan. These are all fantastic models that, that, that we could follow. But I, I think something that, that we've discussed in the RCC meetings and that is called out by the Clean Energy Resolution is Fitchburg doesn't right now have a comprehensive sustainability plan. Now, what the resolution specifically called for was an energy and water plan that has sustainability components. There are questions about how we would wanna pursue this. Do we want it to be a, a broad comprehensive sustainability plan? Do we want it to link up with other plans that the city already has? Does this, should we do this with our own existing internal staff? Do we wanna follow the model of some other cities and, and get some consulting support there? A number of, a number of fantastic resources we have right in our backyard that, that could help us pursue this. But this is something that we've begun, that we've begun to discuss since I began in my position, which is what kind of a plan do we wanna, do we wanna try to pursue and, and how would we go about getting there? So what we do have right now is a Clean Energy Resolution, we have a Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative, a comprehensive plan, a bike and pedestrian plan. I just learned today, talking to Mike Zimmerman, we passed a housing plan last year that I hadn't heard about, which is another fantastic component of sustainability. I know a lot of, a lot of discussion about sustainability really focuses on the environmental aspects, but it really is environment and economy and equity. And so having a Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative, having a housing plan, I think is really important to, to being a broadly sustainable community. And then again, it just raises that question, how does that all tie together into an overarching sustainability plan? The, some of the examples that we have from nearby communities, the, the, the categories they tend to focus on mo, focus on most heavily are listed here as the bullet points, and I just kind of indicated which of our existing plans referenced in the previous slide tie into those. So a lot of sustainability plans talk about land use and planning and our comp plan and our bike and pedestrian plan cover that. They talk about transportation, again, those two plans have elements there. They talk about energy, our Clean Energy Resolution has that. But then there are also a, a couple of areas, and I, I think I, I made a typo in here, waste and water are, are bullet points listed there, waste and water aren't really directly handled by any of those plans I already mentioned. And, and so there, there is definitely still a gap that we'd like to find a way to address. And just kinda figuring out how, what we want that to look like. One other, one other point related to energy is that we, in 2018, we started working with six other municipalities in Dane County and with Slipstream, a consulting company in, in Madison. We secured a $200,000 grant from the Office of Energy Innovation and that, that money was used. Slipstream served as the project manager to gather energy and building occupation and operations data from all of these seven municipalities and prepared a, kind of a comprehensive energy plan, looking at benchmarking, looking at what the energy profile looks like right now. And then kind of creating a list of what, what's the achievable, sort of the low-hanging fruit that each one of these municipalities could pursue and what might those accomplish in terms of savings. For, for Fitchburg, the, the, the high-level takeaway was that there's a lot that could be improved in terms of energy efficiency, fleet upgrades, renew, uh, further renewable energy installations, more green infrastructure, city policies and, and, and ordinances. And all of the, the improvements they recommended could save us as much as 18% of our energy costs annually. So again, we've, we've done a lot, there's been a lot of, of progress made over the last few years, but there's definitely still very, very achievable approaches that, that we could continue to take in the next couple of years. We're not waiting on any new technology, it's just that we need to, we need to kind of prioritize these and, and figure out in what order we wanna tackle them. And I think I wanna send this back to this Nate or Chris?
Sure, I'll, I'll take it. So, uh, these are just a number of the, the grants that the commission has received, or I guess Fitchburg has received over the past several years. And while we have won some nice grants in there, I, I go back to the LED streetlights, you know, that was a nice grant that was won back in 2016. You know, to, to really maximize what Fitchburg can get in terms of sustainability grants, the sustainability plan would definitely help out with helping us, you know, use that to, to leverage to, to get more grants for the community, to do more things, to help fund some of our initiatives and, and reach some of our goals. Next slide, please. So some of our current initiatives include our annual forum event, our annual waterway cleanups, where we have members of the community go out and, and clean up neighborhoods and we try to focus on waterways. We've also been continuing to work on reducing plastic bags use in, in Fitchburg. And so we do that through outreach events, we've done it at both Pick and Save and the High V. We've been looking at potentially doing it at Target. But basically, we just go out for a couple hours and as people come in, we talk about reusable bags and we show some photos of, you know, plastics and, you know, what harm they're doing in the environment. And so, reducing plastic bags has been an initiative and we've been pretty active with that for the past few years. Back in 2012, we did idling reduction efforts, so as you go to drop off your library books, the library, you'll see, you know, that, you know, don't idle. And we've also been active when we do have our semi-annual on-campus recycling events for electronics and paper shredding. We do hand out a flyer to tell people not to, to idle. You know, it's just 10 seconds that you're idling your car, it's, it's better to turn it off. We don't recommend everybody go to every stoplight and, and turn off their car while they're waiting at a red light. But, you know, going through the drive-throughs at the banks, it's become a habit of mine just to, to turn off the car. And, you know, we could do that at fast food drive-throughs as well. We've been very active with community outreach events, so this really kinda came out of the mayor's climate protection agreement that was signed back in 2008, back when I was first involved with the Resource Conservation Commission. We started, you know, one of the big things coming out of that is we have to be actively out in the community doing outreach events. And so we try to do an event every quarter, whether it's a movie showing at the library, whether it's getting out in the community and doing the plastic bags reduction events. We've also gone to the Boys and Girls Club and, and done sessions there where we talk about plastic bags and reusable bags and, you know, just recycling. So there's a, a lot of different things that we try to go out and do in different parts of the community. We wanna continue to be more active and not always just having our events in our comfortable spot at the library, which is a great space. But we also wanna challenge ourselves and, and reach more people out in the community. We've been actively doing Fitchburg Star articles for the last several years. I think we've done, you know, eight to 10 articles a year for, I don't know, the last five or six years. And then obviously, we have our semi-annual electronic recycling shred and med drop events, which are very popular here at the Fitchburg campus. Reducing chloride levels has been a, with our Salt Wise Initiative, has been a, a new point of emphasis, just the amount of chloride that goes into the Madison Lakes. All those levels have been steadily rising over the years and so just trying to get people to be wise about putting salt on their sidewalks and not putting too much out there. And then one of our bigger initiatives, which Kim will touch on a little bit, has been our Aldo Leopold Elementary School Waste Reduction and Recycling Initiative, which is, you know, not only serving that school, but now the Madison School District is taking some of the practices that we established there and trying to apply to all the schools across the Madison School District. So, annual forums, we've had a lot of different ones over the years. I'll just kinda focus on some of, some of the ones that we've been doing most recently. Back in 2016, we did a solar forum where we really focused in on solar energy. Very popular event, a lot of people came and were very curious about the potential of putting solar on their roofs at their, their homes. We had Joe Perisi out from Dane County to do the climate forum in April of 2017. We had Professor James, James Tingim from UW-Madison provide an event on reinventing power, where he talked about wind power, solar power and also battery storage. It was a very popular event. Last year at Promega, we did the Global Climate Change Forum, which is a, a well-attended and well-received event. And then this year, we are again working with Promega and teaming up with them to do sustainable options for managing your food waste better. So that's coming up on April 16th of this year. So, some of the things that, you know, we, I just wanted to share some photos of our waterway cleanup events. You know, we pull a lot of junk out of the, the streams and ditches around Fitchburg and, you know, I know that this has been growing, especially in the neighborhood that I'm at, out in Swan Creek. We've had 20 to 25 people out there just about every year and it, it always feels good to be driving around those corridors, coming into Swan Creek and seeing everything cleaned up. I know Mayor Richardson's been out there a couple times helping out, so thank you for, for that over the years. And we're gonna be having that coming up April 4th to, to do that again. These are some of the community engagement events that I mentioned before, we do try to get out into the apartments. One of the things that I wanna point out, and I know that Dorothy was at one of these events more recently when we did one in 2018. You know, we held up, I remember Nate held up an aluminum can and, you know, asked if, if this was something that was recyclable. And there was some, some question as to whether or not that was recyclable. And, you know, really kind of, you know, that in combination with what we've been seeing in the schools, just the outreach on what's recyclable is really lacking and we feel like there needs to be, you know, a lot more outreach on that. And so we're looking for ways to, to do more of that in the, in the coming years. You know, starting in the schools is, is one thing, to do environmental education there. But, you know, we, we had a lot of education back in the 1980s when we rolled out curbside recycling and, you know, some of the people are kinda losing some of the concepts behind that and we really wanna try to emphasize that and continue to improve in, in the And we really want to try to emphasize that and continue to improve in, in the outreach that we do on that. Again, Aldo Leopold School, we'll get to that very shortly with, with Kim. And, you know, I mentioned these other ones. We did do a movie on Plastic Planet, just talking about the challenges with plastics. One of the things that we've teamed up with the Madison Metropolitan Sewer District is on Saltwise and really trying to reduce the salt pollution in our lakes, streams and, and drinking water. This is getting, starting to get down into the groundwater and we're starting to see increased chloride levels there. And so we really want to see, you know, what we can do as a community to try to reduce the amount of chloride getting out there. And city, yeah, go ahead. Next slide. These are some of our upcoming 2020 initiatives and events. You know, we'd love, you know, if we could move forward with creating a sustainability plan. We are having a rain garden workshop at the Senior Center here coming up in February. I mentioned before, we have our annual forum coming up at PROMEGA on April 16th. We'd like to do the Bring Your Own Bag event at another Pittsburgh store. We're going to try to reduce the breakfast and waste and improve recycling at Aldo Leopold School. So we've, we've tackled the cafeteria during the lunch hour, but what they've started to do is have breakfast in the classrooms. And so they don't have a great way of collecting the milk cartons that are used in the mornings at school. And so we're going to try to work with them using a grant from the Carton Council of North America to improve that. We also, our Green Tier Clear Waters Initiative. And then also working with Healthy Neighborhoods as well. We want to do some sustainability listening sessions. So that's also on the docket for Resource Conservation Commission. I'll pass it over to Kim.
So I wanted to provide a little bit of background on this amazing initiative that we have taken on, the Cafeteria Waste Reduction and Recycling Event at Aldo Leopold. In 2016, RCC partnered with Leopold Elementary School. This was something that kind of came out of me attending school with my son when he was in kindergarten and spending lunch with him and seeing all of the kids just take their waste and just swipe it into the garbage cans. And I just assumed that they recycled. And when I found that out, it was something I was really interested in pursuing. And when I became a member of the RCC, they were very excited and eager for us to take this project on. So this project kind of came out of that. And then I discovered that Chris also had a son at the same school and our kids were in the same class. So that kind of got, got our foot in the door. And we started with some outreach and environmental education efforts to the classes. Through those educational efforts, that was our way to kind of engage the kids and kind of get, get an idea of how much knowledge they had on recycling and what went into the landfill. It was an opportunity for RCC members also to be a part of these outreach efforts at school. And it was to get the teachers to buy into this effort, as well as the administrative staff and the custodial staff. So by doing the educational efforts for the first couple of years, we really engaged the students, the teachers, administrative staff, and custodial staff and got them really bought into this idea. And as we all know, teachers are so stretched thin that, you know, we can't rely on the teachers to head this effort up. So this was definitely something that RCC members spent a lot of volunteer time and hours in helping to create this program. Once we did the educational efforts, we kind of teamed up with some fifth grade classes. We had some outstanding teachers who were really committed to this program. And so we were able to educate kids on what went into the landfill, what is compost and what could be recycled. And we made it a fun effort by doing some relay races with the students. I was able to also get some grant money and grants to provide field trips to the Dane County landfill for the fifth grade students to help them make that connection as to what is going into the landfill and why we want to start this recycling program at school. And then also, we also took a field trip to the recycling center where the kids could see why we recycle and where those efforts go. So once we did that, we then decided we needed to do a waste audit and kind of get a sense of how much waste was really coming out of the school. And what we determined, we engaged the fifth grade students to help us with this effort. They got to weigh the waste and then write down all of the numbers that we came up with. And what we determined is that every day, 60 bags of garbage were being taken out and thrown away. And once we took out the milk cartons and we took out the paper trays, and looking at this photo, you can kind of see a picture of the paper trays. And we have them stacked in a clean pile and two dirty piles. And what we determined is once we took the paper trays out that could be recycled and the milk cartons, that we went from 60 bags a day down to 15 bags being thrown out. So it was a huge number that we were able to take this information and talk to the, the staff and the teachers and the administrators and the custodial staff and say, you know, look at this difference we're able to make in terms of keeping, you know, 15,000 bags out of the landfill. And we were able to reduce the volume of waste down by 75%. So through this effort, we've learned a lot. We've spent a lot of volunteer hours on this. And it's been an opportunity for us to kind of really perfect the system that we have in place. And our team has been very active in showing up at lunch and helping to monitor to make sure that things are running smoothly. And we've had the ability to make changes along the way. And now we've really created a very sustainable lunchroom recycling program that we'll be able to carry on once, you know, Chris and I move on to another school, although I will always still show up and check in on it because we want to make sure that this is an ongoing effort. But it's really, as Chris said, it's really sparking a lot of excitement from other communities and other schools throughout the county. And so through these efforts, we're putting together materials that we're going to be able to then pass on to other schools as they start these efforts. And I think what's exciting about this is the fact that this was a pilot program here at Aldo Elementary. And it's the largest elementary school in Dane County. And so if it can be successful at the largest elementary school, then it certainly can be successful throughout the whole school district.
All right. Coming back together here, you know, as you can hopefully see, I think our commission does a lot of stuff. You know, our, our meetings run to the full time every time and there's always more to talk about. You know, we hold so many events throughout the year. There's so many opportunities to get involved with kind of your little niche of things or, or kind of reach out into some other thing. But I feel like there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot to be, there's a lot done and there's a lot to be done. But I think as Phil kind of was talking about before, you know, when a, when a city is sustainable, you get all of these extra benefits rather than just picking up trash. You get a, you know, you get a clean outdoor environment. You get good community development. You get healthy lifestyles. You also get, you know, economic growth and finally, you know, just the general environmental benefit, all from just being sustainable. So I guess, talking about the next steps moving forward, you know, we want to, you know, keep sustainability going by coordinating, you know, all these outreach opportunities to help the community learn, you know, get informed. And again, we want to continue community engagement at different locations. You know, we want to reach all locations throughout Pittsburgh. As Phil was talking about before, we want to work towards this, you know, this sustainability plan, I think, that will help us, you know, increase our chances of winning grants and helping us move forward to really capture the idea of what it means to, you know, have a sustainable city. And finally, you know, we also want to recommend and incorporate, you know, improvements to the city to help it become, you know, more sustainable at the, at the end here. So I think with that, you know, I think we want to open it up here to a good discussion session. I think we want to, you know, make sure that we're approaching this correctly, that we're taking the right steps, where, you know, we're, we're working on things that you feel like are, are worth it and provide value to the city. If there's any other things that you'd want to suggest or comment on, I feel like, you know, we're all ears to, to you. We're pretty much a whole commission here. So if you have any questions, we'd love to hear them.
I mean, I guess just speaking for myself, I think a lot of great things to see, huge impact, which is awesome to see. So, you know, thank you for all the work you've done so far. You didn't talk about the new elementary school that Oregon is building, but as you probably know, it's going to be the first net zero school in the state. I think they're going to have a big environmental focus. And so that's going to, I think, be a good partner for you as well, as you're looking to do other things too. So I can also help you connect with the principal there. Other people coming through?
Yeah, I wrote down two comments and thanks to all of you for extraordinary efforts. So I know RCC is one of those that is truly a working committee in the city. One question was for the Leopold, are they managing to do composting as well as either recycling or trash?
So that was part of our original initiative, was wanting to also engage with composting. But it was such a huge effort to kind of get this recycling program underway that it was just not something we could take on at the time. But that is something that we are looking at and have some partnerships. There is obviously a garden at the school and there's a garden club that the students participate in. And so it would require, you know, maybe kind of making some adjustments in terms of where the garden is and where the, you know, where the kitchen is. But we've had conversations and there is some interest in that. So that is definitely something we want to pursue. There is a garden bar that is available to the students. And so that was something that we wanted to start with, is being able to compost the garden bar. And then that would be a really great way to kind of get the compost program up and going. So we're actually in the process of looking at some grants to pursue and get a compost program up and running.
Cool. And I know that's difficult because you have to be so careful what goes in it. The other one that I wrote down was natural playscapes around the city. I've always been an advocate for using some of the materials that nature provides in building play equipment and play spaces for kids, rather than using all commercial playground stuff. Is that something that you guys could have a hand in looking at? Or is that kind of outside of the area that you'd be involved with?
Well, I do know that at Leopold, Thousand Friends has been a partner with Leopold and they're the group that we'd been talking with about the recycling program and the composting program. And they had put in for garden grants. And they actually did get some funding to put in some natural playscapes in the kindergarten playground. So I know that's something that they were kind of interested in.
Do you know?
I had two quick things. Yeah, first, I just want to applaud you for the, the time and the energy and the heart that you're putting into this. I particularly like the fact that you found a couple of steps that had a huge impact. And so it keeps things simple and yet we see massive outcome from that. I think it's going to be the sweet spot for anything that we end up trying to do and taking it out to the community in general, is finding just those three things that can make the kind of difference that you've already seen in the school. As far as the other question, well, the question I had is, it seems to me that this particular area is changing substantially. And then as we go on, we're going to continue to see technology and knowledge around, you know, new innovations and different ways of looking at our decisions. I see that we're starting to create a network with other communities and gaining some sense of what they're tracking and what's happening. I'm assuming that we've got some mechanism, whether that's other communities, the utilities, larger corporate entities. And so that as we see, we can learn from each other. But as some of these advancements come forward, we can observe their success and then make some decisions to continue to evolve our practices as well. Are, are we kind of, you know, considering those things in how we develop our strategies?
Yeah, Madison's actually leading a bunch of groups talking about sustainability types of things that are involving pretty much all the neighboring communities, actually. And I know staff is involved in those committees and those meetings as well. And so a big part of that is what are you doing? What can you kind of let other people know in other communities that might be easy wins or can partner with? So I know that's a big piece of it, something that they just kicked off last fall. And I know there's been a few meetings anyway, but I'm sure there's more things coming on at that. So we are working with other communities to try and get that knowledge kind of spreading and going out further.
Outstanding, thank you.
Julia?
Hi, I have a couple of questions. Thank you very much for what you're doing. I see what you have done in Leopold. My kid went to Leopold, but then I, I've been there for a couple of times the last year and I saw the sign about, you know, so it's great. So one of my questions is, because you have a lot of activity coming, so do you have a Facebook page for this group? Do you have one? Like because some other department, they have Facebook pages.
I'm not aware of one. I think anytime we want a social media presence, we'll reach out to, to Lisa Sanford to get something on the general city.
Okay.
Facebook page, but we don't have one for RCC.
I don't know, maybe something that you can consider.
Well, we just passed a policy for that that you ought to look at.
Yeah, so there is a new social media policy. Okay. So the other thing is, you know, how we can also teach businesses here in Pittsburgh have to be more sustainable. I don't know, you want to include that in the plan, you know, because we have a lot of local businesses that, you know, I don't know, they're different industry, but how they can, you know, talk to the employees or have, I don't know. If, have you considered?
Yeah, so we, we actually just had the executive director of Sustain Dane in at our last RCC meeting last week. And so it's, it's still developing, but they really want to do some outreach and get businesses talking to each other and sharing ideas on sustainability. And then also have some, you know, bring in some speakers. You know, I think we're going to try to connect them with our Chamber of Commerce and, you know, really try to share, you know, more ideas that way. PROMEGA has been, you know, really active with, you know, partnering with the Resource Conservation Commission. You know, they've, you know, we actively worked with them to plan the event. So, you know, I'm out there about every two weeks, you know, helping to plan the upcoming annual forum event that we have. And so they're definitely a leader in it. But, you know, I think our, our partnership with Sustain Dane is just developing, you know, and we're, one of the things that we're targeting is the businesses. They're also partnering with us on the Waste Reduction and Recycling Initiative in the schools and helping us, you know, get that, be a driving force to getting that going in, in other schools around Dane County.
Okay. I have.
I'm sorry.
I have a.
Oh, yeah, okay, keep going, sorry.
Can I go?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
No, the other thing is, you know, you mentioned about the community gardens. You know, with the new solar farm that is coming, so maybe you should incorporate some educational, you know, outreach, you know, how we work with MGN and how we can promote that. We are going to have this huge solar farm here eventually and, you know, how we can work with the school, field trip to come to, you know, I don't know. Or they're going to have a kiosk with educational. I've seen some information, so how we can also have our own, you know, voice there too, you know, so it would be nice.
Yeah, I know it was, a couple of years ago, we did a, I guess I wasn't a part of it, but I know we did like a solar field trip. Were you part of that? Where we kind of took a trip around and you saw an example of a residential, you know, solar panel and then you, you know, took a look on the roof here. And I think that's something that we could do again. I feel like that had a lot of interest, especially when you have this huge farm just down the road. I think that would really be interesting for people to look at.
And one of the MGN reps at the finance committee meeting last night mentioned, I don't, I don't think I mentioned it during Common Council, but for this particular O'Brien Solar Farm, you mentioned MGN is going to have an educational kiosk, it'll be on the bike trail. bike trail. But, but he also mentioned the UW Board of Regents as a, as a customer of this array. And it, it sounds like MG&E is, is looking forward to using this as an educational opportunity and so if we want to pursue that, I think they'll be a, a strong partner for us.
Are you done, Julia?
No, I have all the one, but.
All right.
Done.
The last two speakers just took everything out of my mouth. The solar farm, I've been pushing education. I think it's huge. I know you were at our finance meeting last night and you were going to check into it. And until I hear different, I think it's the biggest solar farm in the state of Wisconsin right now.
Top five, I think it's.
Did it change?
It's not number one, I think it's two or.
Okay, I'll take two, I'll take two, I'll take that. But from the educational standpoint and even the pictures, I know you have it, I have the big map at home. Actually MG&E gave it to me and I know it's online, you probably have it. I think that's huge. I mean, with your resource, with your commission, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's not a farm like that's going to go up on the O'Brien property that Sun Prairie has? Middleton, Cross Plains? It's huge. And I think it's something that's got to be spread. On top of this building, O'Brien's farm just knocked it out of ballpark. Big deal. Not the way it sounds, but you know what I mean? I mean, it's small apples compared to what they were about to put up. And that like, that energy's going to stay, well, I don't want to get too far into it because I'm not a chemist, but that energy's going to the power plant behind the Oak Bank. That's where that's going. A lot of people don't know that even where's it going or where's it headed to. It's a power plant off of PD.
Some station.
But for your slides, I encourage you in the commission to take pictures when it goes in. Talking to the O'Briens, you probably won't get a whole lot because they were in farming and now they're just doing the land. But that land, to my knowledge, is going to be put back into agriculture after the solar farm expires. So those are all things to, I think it's huge myself. I like, there's one in Newton around where I live, there's a, on top of a house and the gentleman there, he said, I can't wait to see the new farm, Tom. You just don't, you know, the O'Briens. But I think it's sitting right in your backyard and it's something to, I know you were there last night and you're in tune to it, but I've been pushing that education point. I think it's, I think it's really neat.
Yeah, I think we'll try to maximize that. I also like the idea, I think there were some concerns about the stormwater with all those panels. You know, stormwater is, you know, with the more intense rain events has always, you know, has been a challenge for a lot of different people in neighborhoods, you know, I don't know, I can't go too far within my neighborhood without somebody having some stormwater issue that they're dealing with. But I love the idea of the deep rooted native plantings that are going to go there to, to help with the stormwater management, you know, and I think, you know, we can kind of dial, you know, dial into that as well. But certainly we want to try to promote that and we'll try to, you know, have some events, you know, around, you know, that new solar farm and really try to highlight some of the benefits and continue to do outreach.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, but just, I'm on a key on exactly what you just said. When that farm goes in, it'd be something to photograph that as it goes in and use it in your presentations, when a lot of us in the future aren't even sitting here. And but for the future of Pittsburgh, I think it'd be something really to tune into because it's going to happen, what, spring?
That's, they're starting this spring, yeah, they're going to have, this year they're going to do like two thirds of it, I believe.
Yeah.
One thing that I believe I can mention, this past week, Patrick Anderson, Chief Patrick Anderson from UMS, reached out to myself and the Verona Mayor and he is going to look into doing a pilot for anti, anti-idling technology on an ambulance, actually. So that's something that looking into and maybe trying out on an ambulance to see, you know, these, these things tend to sit somewhere for a little while. And if they can do some anti-idling technology, it might be a good way to reduce the imprint of that. So something that we're looking at piloting anyway. Dorothy?
Okay, back on solar farm, I've made this suggestion to MG&E and they're like, oh, that sounds good. And it won't happen unless there's a group that will help encourage it. I've suggested that they work with Dane Arts to do better than the blah fence that they intend to put up, given that we're building a relatively affluent neighborhood that will be across the road from there, plus we have the school building. I would love to see a decorative, if not educational, fence around the farm, at least fronting on Lacy Road. I think it wouldn't be real difficult to get grant money from Dane Arts if they don't want to pay for it, but they would cer, Dane Arts would certainly work with a group to help design a cool fence instead of just a blah fence. So I'd encourage you guys to also play with that idea. The other question that I had in the meantime was, and if not you, then who question, I've had people contact me and say, well, we got garlic mustard growing along the bike path. Can you have staff come and pull it for us? And I'm like, we don't pay staff to, we help organize neighborhood groups to do garlic mustard pulls and things. Is that what you guys do or is that a different group altogether?
Probably more parks.
Is that parks?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I, I think I'd, I'd like to see a little bit more organized efforts along those lines.
All right, Julia?
Yeah. So can we go to page in the slide or slide number 10? I need to ask you a question over there.
Sorry, which, I don't have.
10, there.
Is this it?
Yes.
Oh, I just got lucky.
Okay, so you mentioned here in the first bullet point that there is a resolution to obtain 100% of city electrical needs through renewable sources by 2030. So according to the following slide, you've mentioned what is our statute 25, 25 goals? We are already at 17%?
Um, I think, uh, an optimistic estimate is 17, somewhere between 13 and 17.
So, okay, so, and then, so my question is, you mentioned at the beginning that this is a very aggressive goal. So because we, it's 2020 and we are almost 13, so we have 10 more year and we want to get 100%. So, so what do you think of the measurement that we need to, to, to take as a city to up, you know, to, to be close to the number? You know, what are the, what do you ambition that, that we need to do? And my second question is, the other point there is reduce the city per capita fossil fuel energy use 50% by 2050. What is the measurement that you're going to use to determine that we are obtaining that goal? You know, what is, how you're going to measure that?
Um, so the, the second question's probably easier to answer, so we'll tackle that first. So that's just looking at our total kilowatt hour and therm purchases from utilities and going with the, the most up to date estimates of, looking at, so we use 2018 as a baseline for this, you know, so I'm going to have to.
Okay.
Keep, keep track of what our 2018 number was in terms of what's our total fossil fuel usage and the, the city population, so per capita in the, in the city of Pittsburgh. And then by 2030, we're just looking to keep bringing that down by implementing renewable energy, by pursuing energy efficiency that'll cut our, our fossil fuel usage, by, you know, continuing to, to support MG&E because they have a goal of being net zero by 2050. And so the faster they strive towards that goal, the more it benefits us because anything that we're purchasing that we haven't already developed, you know, their, their push towards renewables is going to make our energy cleaner. But that's, that's really just measuring the KWH in terms and, and just trying to make sure that we're, we're getting that number down compared to the 2018 baseline. On the 100%, the, the challenge, the biggest challenge right now with, with reaching 100% renewable energy is, is it's a question of when energy's being produced and when it's being used. And solar and wind don't produce around the clock. So if you, so we need, we need utility scale battery storage capacity to get there, to, to be feasible, to be cost effective, I think, in order for us to reasonably hit 100%. The only other, the only other carbon emissions free electricity that exists in the upper Midwest is nuclear and that's, that, that's something that.
It's even more.
Most areas are looking to get rid of, right? It's like, it, it's 100% carbon free, but also it comes with a lot of other problems. And so if we're going to, if we're going to try to achieve 100% with the renewable energy that, that, that we're looking to expand, solar and wind, it's going to require battery capacity so that when the sun and wind aren't producing, we still have that, right? And so I know that Dominion Energy in Virginia has just gotten a, a large battery project approved, but it's, you know, $33 million. It's not, it's not something that, that's likely to be repeated in the Midwest in the next six months. But, but that's, that's something we'd be looking for is if, if the faster commercial battery storage becomes viable, I think the easier it will be for us to, to push our percentage higher and higher.
Yeah, I think I'll just add on to that in terms of the 100%, you know, I think, you know, right in front of us is, you know, all of these, you know, recommendations to reduce our existing energy usage. And so anytime you're putting solar on your own house, you know, they recommend that you, you know, try to get your home as efficient as possible so you're not putting in unnecessary solar energy on top of your roof if you don't need it. And so that's, that's kind of where we should start, you know? Here's a perfect example, the lighting in here, you know, could go to LEDs, you know, I know that this has been a recommendation that we've had out there before, but, you know, that's, that's just an example of, of the types of things that we could take care of, you know, and bring that cost down so that we don't have to add as much renewables. So I think it starts with energy efficiency first.
I was reminded many times by, by folks working in efficiency, the cheapest kilowatt hour is the one you don't use. And so that, that's absolutely the way to, the, the place to start, yeah. I agree.
I have another question, it's regarding transportation. Have you considered bringing to the city the e-bikes?
It's a good question. I don't think we've talked about it internally. I think that's something that either us or with Public Works, maybe?
Oh, we, you know, we are in the bike committee, so we can maybe, yeah, talk to them, you know, it's part of the.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Yeah.
Sustainability and.
Yep. And I know it has been a discussion in the bike committee, I think, before I came in.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would, it would still be something to pursue.
Yeah, to talk about, you know.
Yeah.
Brace for.
Anything else?
Oh, the others?
Yep, yeah.
I seen, I don't know, we incorporate this in the housing plan, that how we can, you know, ask, I, I think that we can now impose in developers to have some sort of a percentage of material to be more recycled or, you know, or solar or geothermal because sometimes it makes the development more expensive. But I think that if we are providing TIF money for some development, especially like, you know, like with the senior housing and other one that are coming in the pipeline, we should request, you know, that they should have some sort of energy efficiency component, you know, in the development. It could be solar, it could be geothermal, you know, or a percentage of the material that should be recycled. You know what I mean? So something that we need to think about, how we can incorporate those concept, you know, especially when we are giving TIF money, you know, I think we can ask, you know what I mean? But how we can, I know that some states are more extreme like California that they require homeowner to have solar panel in some development. So I don't, I don't think that we are even close there, but you know, how we can, can promote, you know, solar or, or other sources, you know, in new construction, you know what I mean? So I don't know.
Thank you for all the work that all of you do and you really make a huge impact in the city. So, and thanks for your time tonight. I don't see anything else. So thank you very much for coming in.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for hosting.
All right. So next to me, the whole means not until April, like we've done at least for the last few years, we tend to cancel the March meeting, the whole meeting. So with it being close to the end of people's terms, it seems like a typical time or a good time to do that. So otherwise, if someone likes to make a motion to adjourn, we can do that. Is there a second? All right, second by Ann, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.